Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Alperano.
Here.
And Mayor Bernwirth.
Here.
Everybody, please stand for the lunch engines. Councilmember Alperano, will you?
Ready, begin.
Sure, is Dennis?
Having some issues.
Okay, in that case, City Manager's Office, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Madam Mayor, we do need to pull out two warrants out of the Claims and Warrants Report on Consent Agenda. Warrant number 109963 for JT Towing and warrant number 109975 for Nancy Alperano.
With that, do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Sorry. Okay. Moving on, action item taken in closed session? No, we're just adjusting the agenda.
Oh, okay.
The two. Ms. Turner, do we have any adjustment or action taken in closed session?
Yes, we do. First, the Council discussed Conference with Real Property Negotiators as listed in the agenda. Direction was given to negotiator. There were also three matters of anticipated litigation. Direction was given to Council to report a specific case related to social media to the Imperial County District Attorney.
Thank you. Public appearances, moving on. Item C, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the Council concerning any item within the Council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted and written to the Council. Do we have any public comments, Ms. McGary?
So glad to see all of you. It's exciting to see everybody in such a, it seems like it's been a long time. Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Deborah McGary. I am the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company for the City of Imperial. I'm here to provide an update on the natural gas prices, which had been historically high in recent months. We want to share that the market prices for natural gas continues to drop, driving a more than eighty percent disc decrease in the SoCal Gas March procurement rates from the January high bills. SoCal Gas estimates the average monthly bills for March will be about a hundred dollars or less from the January average of three hundred. These numbers will vary based on usage. SoCal Gas does not set the prices for natural gas. Instead, natural gas prices are determined by the national and regional markets. SoCal Gas buys the natural gas in those markets on behalf of residential and small business customers, and the cost of buying gas is billed with no markup, meaning SoCal Gas does not profit from the movement of the commodity prices. Recently, the California Public Utilities Commission approved to accelerate the California Climate Credit of fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents. This credit will show on SoCal Gas residential customers in either February or March. SoCal Gas is also delaying collection activities on overdue residential accounts and will not disconnect overdue residential customers until further notice. We have paused all non-residential collection field activities effective of February first. We continue to inform and offer several ways to help income-qualified customers through our Bill and Home Improvement Assistance Program, bill forgiveness plans, and level play pay plans. SoCal Gas recently announced a ten million dollars to shareholder funds to provide additional relief to low-income families, seniors, and small restaurant owners impacted by the unprecedented regional natural gas market prices. That ten million dollars will be broken up into three different sections. Five million dollars will go to the Gas Assistance Fund, a program assisted by the United Way will provide a one-time grant to low-income qualified customers to help them pay for their natural gas bills. Four million dollars will go to a relaunch fueling our communities, a collaborative program with local food banks and nonprofit organizations that will provide free meals and groceries to thousands of Californians through food insecurity programs, facing food insecurity. One million will go to Restaurant Care Resilience Programs to help small restaurants to improve and upgrade employee retention and manage debt losses and rising costs. For more information on these programs, please go to socalgas.com. And if you need any additional information, I'll be happy to share that with the City Manager and City Clerk. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any other public comments? Mr. Phillips, please step up to the podium.
Thank you. Alan Phillips, 200 East Second Street. I'm the CEO of the Fairgrounds. And so I'm just here to say, you know, we've just concluded the 115th running of the California Midwinter Fair. It was very successful, and I want to thank everybody here. You know, we run the thing, the event on the property, but it does take more than just us. So I want to thank Dennis and his staff. I want to thank Jackie and his staff at Public Works, the police, Fire Department, because they all came together to help us make that event very successful. So I want to thank everybody for all of those assistance. We have some potential big changes for next year that, once we have gotten those things kind of in the works and finalized and moving forward, it's going to be very important that we work with the City very closely for that next year and those changes that are coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have any other public? Ma'am, please step up to the podium.
My name is Cat Loper. I live at Bodeo Drive. I have three items, but they're all related. First of all, does the City have any plans to put a turn arrow on the corner of Fifteenth Street and Highway eighty-six?
I'm going to turn to Mr. Morrow for that one, or is that with Mr. Loper?
When you say, when you say turn, as far as adjusting the turn signal?
No, an arrow to turn. There are repeated accidents on that corner because of people trying to come across fifteen. People are trying to come on the school side, and they hit head-on. There was just one last week over there with the head-on between cars at that intersection. It desperately needs a turn arrow only, especially since the Starbucks opened, the post office is down there, and the McDonald's. My next concern is, is the City working with the City to get drop-offs and pickups with the school moved closer, further down the street where the gym is? Because it's a nightmare trying to get to the post office in the morning, McDonald's or Starbucks, when everybody's dropping off their children to go to school. You can't get across. Cars are lined up down eighty-six with parents wanting to turn in that corner. People are coming from El Central to turn. It's just, you can't get in. Normal residents, if you're not dropping off kids at school, you can't get to the post office. And if the school would just move the drop-off and pickup down towards the gym, that would alleviate that mess at the corner and free up it for everybody else that lives in Imperial that don't have children going to school. And then, to help with the problem too, there needs to be a frontage road opened from the post office to Nickel some way so that that, there's another avenue to get over there. Because it's just a nightmare. I forget sometimes that I need to go to the post office. You can't get to the post office when all these people are dropping off all their kids. And then when they go to pick them up, you can't get to the post office because they're lined up on both sides of the road, in front of McDonald's, in front of the school. There's traffic people out there trying to direct traffic. People are crowding. People don't give to let you get through. So that whole mess, I hope the City is working on that traffic issue because it is a major, major traffic issue.
Thank you, ma'am. I can assure you that that is one area that we are constantly talking about, how different ways we can fix. A little bit of them are tied to funding. You know, we've talked about putting a turn, you know, a right-in and right-out off of Belford and eighty-six, and it's just one of those things that's still in the planning. So I understand your frustration, but I hope you can be patient with us and know that we are diligently working on it.
If the school would work with the City, that would alleviate massive mess at that corner. They just need to move the drop-off and the pickup further down the road because at that particular corner, you've got Starbucks, you've got McDonald's, you've got the post office, and you've got five thousand, seems like, parents dropping off their kids or picking them up. And so if the school would cooperate with the City, and it would be a joint effort, just move that traffic issue further down the road would help a lot.
Yeah, well, I'll make sure that I bring that up. We're going to have a meeting with the two-on-two meeting with the school board here pretty soon to talk about that issue and some other ones. So I'll make sure. If you leave your contact info with our City Clerk, I'll make sure I follow up with you on that.
Yeah, because it's always been an issue, but now that Starbucks and McDonald's and the post office are all there, it just multiplied the issue.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments for tonight? Madam Clerk, did we receive any public comments via email? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item D then, Special Presentations. Tonight, we're going to do the recognition of the Imperial High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team, and we have... As an alumni of Imperial High School, I'm always so proud when our, you know, any of our students win a championship like this. So we're very excited to congratulate all of you, and we have certificates of recognition for the whole team. So when I call your guys' name up, we can start rolling through. I have certificates for each of you. And so this one is a certificate of achievement for your accomplishments as a member of the Imperial High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team, and in recognition of your achievement as a first-ever Imperial CIF San Diego Division Five Champ, or Four Champion. Go Tigers! So this one is for Elian Herrera. Are you going to shake everybody's hand? Jacob Malone. Hunter Gannon. Did I mess up one up? David Scarianno. Gio Robles. We're still good. I'll send it to Nicole. You can stand in this place. Mark Vitella. Twenty-one Jared Nixon. Fred Rollins. Dominic Suarez. Seth Chat. I think that it does, but it, no, it's the... The writing's too bad. I think I chose two curvy little puns. Fernando Villa Alba. Samuel Rubacalva. I have some from the coaches, too. Dave Miller. Matt Metalla. I know how everyone shuffle. Okay, yes. Talk people back. Say, say, repeat. Madam Mayor, if I could quickly, I also want to... Thank you, guys.
I'm good. How are you?
This one, we think, were popular. We give the certificates and we're left alone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations, Coach. Bye. Thank you to our diehards in the audience that are still here. Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
So we're going to move on to item E for the Consent Agenda, and one of the adjustments was to pull two, to have this in two separate items. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Hold on, I need you to save with the claims minus JT Towing. It'll be...
The way it is.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the consent while removing 109963 and also 109975.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Obeso Martinez and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from, Councilmember Tucker? Do I have a motion for...
I'll make a motion to approve warrant 109963 for JT Towing.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Alperano and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from Councilmember Tucker.
Moving on to the last one, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 109975.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain from Mayor Pro Tim Alperano.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. Action item F1, Declaration of Imperial Police Department Vehicles as Surplus, Chief Crenshaw.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. The item before you is the, we have two city-owned vehicles that are, we are slated for decommission. One of them came by way of forfeiture. It has a hidden compartment as part of that. Any vehicles that have that cannot be sold. They have to be demoed. So that is very similar to what we just did with another vehicle that was of the same make. The other one is a vehicle that has served its purpose, gave us our miles. Now out there languishing, and it needs to, it does have some auction value, so we'll be going through that. We did have a third one that we were looking at, but that is going to be a trade-in as for part of our programs. So if you have any questions, be more happy to answer for you.
Perfect, thank you. Do I have any questions from the Council?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Alperano and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item F2, Subject Cease Emergency Established by Resolution 2022-60 at Sendawood Glen, Sky Ranch, Cross, and Colonia Pump Stations. Mr. Loper.
The sum of sixty-five thousand, five sixty, no, excuse me, five ninety-six forty-six. This was for repairs to various wastewater pump stations throughout the southern side of the city.
Do I have any questions from the Council?
Yeah, a real quick question. Is this going to be a, at a water wastewater? Wastewater? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Alperano and a second by Councilmember Tucker. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
That, we're going to move on to our special meeting item, which is C1 on the special meeting for State Lobbyists and Advocacy Services for the City of Imperial.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council Dennis Marita, City Manager. You have before you the result of an RFP that the City released to seek lobbyist and advocacy assistance at the state level. We received several well-qualified, strong candidates and the recommendation from staff. And basically, what we see as a difference is that the partnership of JGC Government Relations and Venter Public Affairs and Strategy, they have very strong ties to our local legislators, both in the Assembly and the State Senate. And for that reason, we suggest going with a contract with that firm in an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars per month.
Is there any representatives from the firm here? Mr. Salazar, please step up to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council Members and City Staff. Frank Salazar. I live in Kitty Hawk. I love living on Kitty Hawk, and I want to remain living there for the rest of my life. So I'm here on behalf of Venter Public Affairs, and I have our principal, Jonathan Clay, on the Zoom. I'm here on behalf of Vencer Public Affairs and, uh, I have our principal, uh, Jonathan Clay on the Zoom, I believe, and also Erin Gilbert, our partners as well, who are in Sacramento. On Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers Jonathan Clay, um, just thank you for the opportunity to work for you possibly, so thank you very much.
Erin.
Hi, nice to meet you all. I look forward to working with you and for the opportunity and, um, hopefully we can meet in person soon.
Excellent, thank you. So this is the team that we have in front of you, uh, for to be your advocates in Sacramento. As mentioned, uh, we have a good relationship with both legislators and the agencies in, in Sacramento as well. So we are at your service twenty-four seven, um, like I said, I live here in Imperial as well. So I commute to Sacramento once a month, but more importantly, I will be attending your council meetings. I will make my email and my phone available to all, to your city staff and city manager, except Mr. Loper. But more importantly, um, I, uh. But more importantly, uh, we welcome, uh, the partnership for, for the year to come and, uh, Godspeed, thank you.
Do I have any questions for Mr. Salazar's team from the council? Thank you, we look forward to working with you as well. I know, uh, right now we have a lobbyist at the federal level, but I, you know, one of my goals was to get a lobbyist at the state level too. To make sure that Imperial has the best grant opportunities or earmarks or anything, uh.
Well, yeah, the city's growing and the time is now and it's time to flex our muscles here in the city of Imperial, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Forward.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Amparano and a second by, uh, Councilmember Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five zero. With that, we'll move on to item G1, department reports. Do I have any department reports from any of the department heads here?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the council. So as you, uh, may already know, our Blues Brews and Barbecue Event is, uh, scheduled to take place next Saturday. Here in downtown Imperial, uh, everybody watching on Facebook Live, uh, make sure you come and join us. And also, A- April eighth, from twelve to five, we'll have our Autism Awareness Fair here at Eager Park. Uh, come join us as well, uh, Mr., uh, uh, Amparano, our Mayor Pro Tem will be, uh, at the Dunk Tank. Uh, if you would like to, uh, to come and dunk, I, I, this is what I heard, I'm sorry.
Why just into the rubble?
All proceeds go to, uh, uh, raise awareness for autism. What date is this? April eighth, okay.
From what time to what time you wear that?
Uh, Eager Park, uh, twelve PM to five P.
So this is a chance to raise good money, right?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, look forward to it.
Do I have any other staff volunteering to be on the dunk tank?
I'll volunteer to pay and throw.
Make a motion, Mayor. Does that, does that count? If I can get a second, it counts, right? Oh, I got a second.
We're not voting.
Was that?
Okay, and moving on, do we have any other cartoon staff? Seeing none, um, I just appreciate all you guys' hard work you put in, um. Okay, and then, so moving on to city manager reports, do we have anything, Mr. Marita or Ms. Brown? Perfect, um.
Nothing, nothing for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, um, so I'll start to my left, Councilmember, uh, Obaso Martinez, do you have anything to report?
There is the availability to apply for the Friends of Imperial Parks, um, Board of Directors. So if you want to apply, you are encouraged to join and that is at thecityofimperial.org, so you can visit the website and apply. I'm excited about that.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Um, uh, these past weekend, some of us here on council have the opportunity to attend the NAF. Airshow, that's the first time I'd been there in decades and that was just an absolute awesome experience. Um, thank you to the commanding officer for welcoming, welcoming us into his shaly. Um, it was a great day. Um, I did have the opportunity to attend the Imperial Valley CCC Meeting and just to give you guys some heads up for your calendars. Um, we, they will be announcing a Spring Career Expo at IVC, I don't have the dates on that yet. I believe June fifteenth, IVEDC Energy Summit. Um, they're also gonna be competing with IVC, having a Pathways to Success Event at IVC. And if those of you interested in entertainment, May twelfth is the Dancing with the Stars Event. And, um, they did make an announcement that they've already, uh, started working on the lithium. Uh, oriented curriculum out at IVC and they've already, um, prepared one, um, of the event or one of the. Uh, certificate programs and they have a plant operator cohort that they're going to be offering starting in the fall. So anybody that's looking at trying to get some type of education that's gonna help them in this industry that's coming into the valley. Um, you might wanna check with IVC and, and see about becoming part of that cohort and that is all.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Amparano?
Yeah, a couple things for your calendars, uh. March twenty-third for the League Dinner will be held at the, uh, Town Pump in Westmoreland. So look forward to that, it's our time where as a cities, we can come together and hang out with and talk business and, uh. Talk with other cities and, you know, shoot ideas back and forth, so it's always a great time. And yes, I did have the pleasure to attend the, uh, NAF Airshow again, once again, great time, great show. Um, great people, uh, great time, so if anybody ever gets to go into that again, uh, look forward to it. Gotta, gotta make the time to get out there. Um, I think Saturday, we're talking Little League, right? We have the Little League opening ceremony, so we'll be looking forward to that and then, uh, Sunrunners on Saturday. Alright, I think that's about it for me, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. And I just wanna thank all my council members, those were like amazing reports and now I have absolutely nothing to say, so. Uh, actually, there is one thing I wanted to say though, on, uh, March twenty-fifth at eight PM to twelve PM at Heber Elementary. Uh, Mana is actually putting on a for seventh and eighth graders, it's a lead, leadership, lead, youth leadership conference. And they have workshop and STEM, college pathways and leadership development. Um, so if you have any junior high kids, that might be something, um, interesting for them to check out.
Comment on that, sorry.
No worries.
So it's, um, free for your seventh and eighth graders, they'll be provided breakfast and lunch. And they have leadership confer- they have STEM program, um, they have a lot of activities and some guest speakers that are available. So it's a free program up to a hundred students.
I just wanna give a shout out to all my Southwest Valley Four-Each kid members from Imperial. They, a lot of them did amazing and showing their animals and their still life projects and everything they did at the fair. Um, and if you ha- I mean, those kids put in so much work and to see their level of professionalism and the hard work they put into. And then a lot of them will sell it at auction, um, their animals and those go to helping them. You know, a lot of them use it for college funds later on, so, uh, I just wanna give a quick shout out to all of them. And with that, I wanna adjourn this meeting, um, of the regular city council until the next regularly scheduled meeting, Wednesday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM. Thank you. I adjourn this meeting at seven thirty-seven.